Good evening, everyone. We are convening today at the special meeting of the San Francisco Democratic County Central Committee. And this is to deal with specific issues related to our policy on sexual assault and sexual harassment, our code of conduct, and rechartering. I appreciate everyone for making the time to be here, and hopefully we will be able to have a productive meeting. I do want to note that the general public comment in the circulated agenda has two minutes per speaker. We do have a significant number of people who are registered for this meeting, over 100. And so by my discretion, I will limit general public comment to one minute per speaker. Members should also be in receipt of a public comment that was submitted in writing in advance courtesy of our executive director. So without further ado, item, agenda item number one, call to order and roll call. Internal Ops Director Mike Chen, please call the roll.
Calling the roll, starting from the top, Member Akbar.
Present.
Ali Oda Pierre.
Here.
Avalos.
Here.
Barnes.
Present.
Halamucci.
Here.
Chan.
Member Chan did text me and say that she may be running late because of a budget committee meeting.
Thank you Chair Tong. We'll come back. Chandler.
Present.
President, Mike Chen, myself here. Coles. Oh, come back. Come back. I think Member Dorsey is proxy, has a proxy, is that right?
Correct, that's me.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Galata.
Here.
You, Gupta.
Here.
Air.
Here.
Ho.
Here.
Present, yes. Kim. Back, Li. Come back, Mahmoud.
Present.
Present, Mar.
Present.
Win.
Present.
It's Philhauer.
Here.
Senjuardi.
Here.
Member Two is absent, excused, and last Chair Tong.
Present.
Present, okay. Ex officios, Pelosi.
I believe Pelosi is unable to attend today.
You, Mullin. Back, Kunalakis.
Present.
Present, proxy, proxy cats, Ma.
By proxy.
Proxy, Boylow, Cohen.
Present by proxy.
Proxy, Weisenger, Weiner.
Present by proxy.
Andrews, Haney.
Present by proxy.
Proxy, Gallardo, Stephanie.
Present by proxy.
Proxy, Balzone, see. Chair Tong, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number two, approval of meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Thank you, Member Avalos. Second.
Second.
That was Vice Chair Barnes. Can we take this without objection? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? And any abstentions? So the meeting agenda is approved. Now, we will move on to general public comments, and I will ask Executive Director Esmond Yari to take over at this point.
Thank you Chair Tong. As the Chair mentioned at the top of the hour, she is amending the allotted time for public comment per speaker from what was originally in the agenda to now one minute per person. Public comment is limited to one hour in total by our bylaws. Because this is a special meeting, public comment is limited only to the items noticed on the agenda. If you would like to make a public comment, please use the raised hand function at the bottom of your Zoom screen. If you're listening to this meeting via your phone, please dial star then nine to enter the queue. I will call on members of the public in the order that I see hands raised. Please note, Zoom will notify you when you're being promoted to the panelist area. Click Join as a Panelist to join and give public comment. Note that this body takes all public comment during this item. Each member of the public will have one minute to address this committee. Associate members, including club presidents or chairs, members of the Democratic State Central Committee, Assembly District Chairs, and Regional Directors will have double the amount of time, so in this case, two minutes, to address this committee. I will give you a 30-second notice. Well, actually, I will have a timer running. It'll be on my box, but you'll see the timer, and then it'll make a small chime when it's up. Without further ado, I'm going to start making note of the hands I see. All right, starting with Jordan Davis, followed by Jonathan Mead, and then John Transvenia. Jordan Davis, promoting to panelists.
Good evening. My name is Jordan. My pronouns are she, they, and I am what you would call an inconvenient survivor. On sexual assault harassment policy, I know that this is something of good intentions, but I'm just pessimistic that absent of major paradigm shift that will have any impact, and I just think that we have assaulters in both factions. Like, big example, like John Jacob on the left and Jay Ching on the right, and we've had a lot of problems on both sides, and I don't want this to be like, you know, a moderates going after progressives, like, sort of thing. I want assaulters out of our community, no matter what their political thing. I myself am a survivor of a political sex pest. During the July 9th, the supervisors meeting, I came out about Ashraf Afay groping me during a political event in 2018. I sent you a letter about this. I received little or no support during this time, nor at any time, not from moderates, not from progressives, and it's burned me out and made me act out a lot. I don't want to remember the way I gained my trauma anymore, but I want you to know that even as a survivor, I've grown Jane on weather culture at this point where something like this can be successful. What can I say if I'm just fucking done?
Thank you for your comment. And up next, Jonathan Mead.
Jonathan, you here?
I'm trying to get there. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm Jonathan Mead. I'm the president of the Richmond District Democratic Club. And after reading through the policy on sexual assault and sexual harassment, and also regarding rechartering, I'm just wondering if at some point later in the meeting, you can address my question, which is where do I go for additional clarifying information, either about the policy on sexual assault or about the rechartering question? I think that there are probably other people on the call who that information would be valuable to, if you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Jonathan. Up next is John Transvenia. You're muted, Mr. Transvenia.
Good evening, Democratic leaders. I wanted to express my support for the proposal that's coming before you tonight. I am a consultant to the California Democratic Party of the Ombuds on the State Code of Conduct. And I will say that your code of conduct is ambitious, and it's probably unparalleled and unprecedented for a local organization to take this on. And it demonstrates, and I think all of the outreach and input taken by Lilly Ho and by the members of the DCCC, listening to advocates, listening to experts, listening to members of the community, listening to clubs, is all very, very beneficial to a good final product. So I encourage you to debate it thoroughly tonight and to adopt it as quickly as possible. It's important for our party, it's important for our members, and I want to thank everyone for their efforts.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Transvenia. Aware of the little bump. Up next, we have Alondra Garcia, Dennis Hendricks, Sam Maslin, and then Scott Andreas. Alondra Garcia, promoting to panelists.
Oh, hi. Hello, good evening, San Francisco Democratic Party. I'm Alondra Escobar Garcia, the current president of the San Francisco Women's Political Committee. I just wanted to urge this body to vote yes on the code of conduct and policies addressing sexual harassment and abuse here in the Democratic Party. As many of you know, SNWPC was in the forefront of advocating on behalf of survivors and holding abuses and their allies accountable for various heinous acts and truly trying to change the culture of the San Francisco party when it comes to sexual violence in politics. Thank you so much to this iteration of the Democratic Party for working with us, with survivors, with community, with democratic clubs to put together a concise policy. We truly urge your vote for yes, and we are here as an organization to help with the implementation of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Up next, I have Dennis Hendricks. Promoting to panelists.
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Great. I would echo a lot of what Alondra said. As an attendee of a lot of the sessions, coming from the Harvey Milk Club, but also a survivor myself, and someone who also participates as an HR practitioner and change management practitioner, I think you all have done a really great job in pausing and taking this seriously and like, really pushing this forward and implementing a program that I think will be effective. I have two suggestions. One, which you just may want to think about, is decoupling this from the chartering process so that the clubs can absorb this as a way to move this forward, separate from a punitive measure, and like, thinking of this as a chartering effort versus an actual effort to get this done and take this seriously, which I think is important. And the other thing is just around being survivor-centric, thinking about how to implement this with the chartered clubs themselves so that they can really absorb, take this seriously and push this forward. I think that's really important. The implementation is really effective. An ineffective implementation pushes all the rest of it kind of down the hill. So.
Thank you for your comment.
I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Up next, I have Sam Maslin and Scott Andreas. Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Awesome, yeah, great to be here. So I'm Sam Maslin. I'm with the Noe Valley Democratic Club. Definitely support this effort. I think it's a really good thing. Just quickly looking over the, this is maybe a little bit more of a process question, but it wasn't, it seemed to make sense, although, you know, I think in the rest of the board of the club, you know, we wouldn't want it to be overly, you know, something that's, you know, let's make it effective, let's not make it overly onerous in ways that are not effective. It wasn't clear to me how, you know, you wouldn't have both a DCCC sort of investigation and a club investigation. The former was pretty well spelled out. You know, I don't think we should be doing like parallel processes for a given incident, so that may be offline. We could understand how that works. Also, the training requirement does seem, you know, like a lot of people need to be trained. I don't know if it's defined what the training is. Again, you would really like information materials, training that's effective, but not, you know, overly onerous for, you know, people like that are, you know, volunteer members that are the secretary, you know, that serve them. That's kind of my only comment, but I think this is a really great initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Maslin. Up next is Scott Andreas, followed by Michael Rupet. Ru- Ru- Rupet, I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone. My name's Scott Andreas. I co-chair policy for the LSB Talkless Democrats. I'm here to express Alice's support for the code of conduct and policies. Please take a look at the letter of support that we've submitted in your packet if you haven't yet. Alice Dems are grateful to the special committee for their work and for listening carefully to feedback from myself and from Alice's leadership. The special committee has incorporated this feedback, along with input from over a dozen chartered clubs, stakeholder groups, survivors, and experts. It's an honor to have had an opportunity to contribute. Alice Dems are pleased with the code of conduct and policies the committee has produced, and we recommend its adoption by the San Francisco Democratic Party. So on behalf of Alice Dems, it's great to see all of you, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Michael Rupet. When you're ready.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much, particularly to Chair Ho of the special committee. It's been a privilege working with you. You know, from the onset of the discussion, you know, there were concerns that were raised that there was a lack of representation of Black and Brown communities. And I appreciate you working with us to try to meet us halfway on a lot of the policy issues. There were some challenges in terms of the restorative process that we were looking to hope to implement, but this is a foundation. This is something that we can work with, and our club members and our clubs are willing to try to work. We're having these conversations because we are committed to changing the culture with all of you and your support. At this time, I will personally say endorse all of the effort that we made. My club has not made an official endorsement of it, but I want to keep the conversation going because I think it's very important. I think it's also important to note that when we talk about historical aspects of racism, I appreciate that those were taken into account, but we're looking at the broader spectrum of ending the culture and changing the culture of sexual assault and harassment.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Up next, I have Ernesto Quayar, and then Beverly Upton.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for doing this. My name is Ernesto Quayar, Vice President of the San Francisco Democrats. And first, I just want to thank Lilly Ho, Member Ho, for her efforts on this and for including us San Francisco Democrats in this. I have truly seen how community has come together, all voices have come to the table, and we have been able to come up with a really inclusive and a really amazing platform and amazing policy to move forward and change the culture of our democratic clubs in our party. I think as San Francisco Democrats, we have some of the most vulnerable folks to this kind of abuse that happens in our field of work in politics, so we're very thankful for this. And San Francisco Democrat leadership endorses this, and we are excited to get to work with this policy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Up next, I have Beverly Upton.
Good evening, friends.
You're good to go. Let me restart the clock.
Very good. I'll be brief. That's okay. Thank you so much. Beverly Upton, she/her, I've been a domestic violence advocate for over 25 years here in San Francisco and a survivor of domestic violence. I just wanted to say what an honor it's been to work with the work group and the committee on this policy. So much has gone into this, and San Francisco has a long history of this, of this issue, and we're so grateful to see the progress being made at the DCCC and all of the democratic clubs. So I'm just really here to thank you all, to send the communities thank you, and also just to urge the policies passing and full implementation. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, folks. As of right now, Chair Tong, there are no hands raised. I will take a moment to once again encourage folks, if you would like to give public comment on this item, or on all items on this agenda, that please either raise your hand function at the bottom of the Zoom screen, or if you're on the phone, please dial star nine to enter the queue. I'll hold for a few minutes in case any other hands pop up.
So it does appear that I have overestimated the number of people who might like to give public comments. If there's anyone who has made a public comment that would like an extra minute, you may re-enter the queue if you like. Otherwise, seeing no more hands.
I have one hand.
One more hand.
Sir Derek Remski.
Okay.
Promoting him to panelist. Chair Tong, are you saying I should change this to two minutes or keep it at one?
I suppose let's keep it to one.
Okay.
Because I know that Mr. Remski can sometimes talk a lot, but.
Okay. Mr. Remski, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Thank you, DCCC, for being brave, being strong, and putting this bold policy forward. I fully support it. The United Democratic Club has sent a letter that should be in your packet supporting it. And I just want to thank you for taking a step that has been needed to be taken for a very long time. And bravo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Remski. I will again pause in case there is anybody in the attendees of today's meeting who wishes to raise their hand to give public comment. Or if you've already given public comment and you want to take one more minute per Chair Tong's request or PSA.
Okay.
Chair Tong, I believe that is the end of public comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Executive Director. Moving on to agenda item number four, this is the code of conduct and policies for sexual assault and harassment for the San Francisco Democratic Party. The discussion will be led by Chair Ho, but before we get into it, I do want to make some prefatory remarks. This was one of the first things that I did as the chair of the San Francisco Democratic Party. And it was not just coming at a time where I think the public's attention was on the climate, the political climate, and the prevalence of sexual assault and harassment within our local political environment. But also, it was a promise that I had made to members of the San Francisco Women's Political Committee back in 2021, when they first raised this issue very bravely and presented to the party. And there was no action taken at that time by the party. So this is something that has been on my mind for the last three years, and I'm very happy that we have come together in community with survivors and with stakeholders, including our clubs, to craft this policy, along with experts in the field, and including with the assistance of the state party's ombudsman himself, John Transvenia. I'm very excited about what this means as we take a bold step as leaders in the Democratic Party to make our spaces safe for everyone and empower those who would stand up to abusers with power. I'll turn it over to Chair Ho at this point.
Thank you, Chair Tong. I will just start with a brief overview of the actual work that has gone into the special committee and the policies. When Chair Tong initiated the special committee, we understood the job, and it was specifically to create a framework for accountability and work on beginning to change the culture within the political spaces that allow for sexual assault and harassment. We want diversity, inclusion. We want young people. We want women. We want people of all kinds to be participants in our political environment, and in order for that to happen, these spaces need to be safe. When we first created our first, had our first policy workshop, we brought together democratic clubs, experts, survivors, advocates, and a few members of the general public together. At this first meeting, no one knew what to anticipate, and to be honest, you know, neither did the special committee. But we were there, and, you know, very intentional to set upon this work ahead of us. And at that first meeting, we agreed to a few common objectives to guide the policies that we would create together. And they were, one, to be survivor-centric, two, to focus on education, and three, to be clear and useful guidelines. With these three common objectives, we set forth to create the policies. And as the conversations deepened, and as the policies began to take shape, we acknowledged some other objectives that were important to all of our stakeholders. And I'm going to name a few of them to us now and kind of describe what went into them and how they have shaped our policies that you see before you. One is privacy. It was important that our policies take great care to protect the confidentiality of both the complainants and the respondents throughout the entire process. This serves to be both survivor-centric and comfortable for the complainant, but also, and this was important specifically in our political environment, it was meant to limit the possibilities of weaponization of accusations while incidents were still under review. Another thing that was incredibly important was independence. Independence of both, of the entire process, separate from the political environment. So we've implemented strict guardrails in place so that the fact-gathering evaluations and assessments are independent and fair and considerate of all perspectives. We have written in our policies that the ombuds person, the investigators, and the judicial council shall have no personal or political connection to anyone within the San Francisco political environment or the parties involved. Another issue that was important was that we wanted to give our democratic clubs agency. And we had to walk a fine balance between giving clubs agency and also providing clubs with oversight and guidance. And this stems from the initial objective of changing the culture of sexual assault and harassment that persists in our environment. In order to change culture, we have to change how everybody is involved at the ground level, and that means at the club level. We wanted to be sure that club leaders knew how to navigate environments and situations like this. And we wanted to empower everyone in the political environment to speak up, to make corrections, and to hold accountability amongst themselves. Also, part of changing culture also means like embracing education and facilitating understanding, and that leads us to our restorative practice. We're giving space for restorative facilitation, whether an incident is substantiated or unsubstantiated. And, and this is at the will of both the complainant and the respondents in, in the incidents, if they choose to do so. And the Democratic Party would be happy to, you know, allow for the space for accountability and also for healing through restorative practice. There's a lot I can go into, and I think we will speak to some of that during our, you know, our dialogue and conversation. But here, I would actually just like to thank everybody involved. I would very much like to thank the members of the special committee, Vice Chair Carrie Barnes, Member Trevor Shandler, Vice Chair Emma Hyken-Hare, Member Bilal Mahmood, Member Michael Nguyen. Everybody on this special committee was dedicated and committed to seeing these policies into fruition. And a very special thank you to Chair Nancy Tong. Nancy, Chair Tong, your courage and commitment to seeing this through is unprecedented. And your leadership has allowed us to lead in creating these policies that are first of its kind at the, at the local level across the nation. So thank you for letting us lead on this. And additionally, it is so important that we acknowledge all of our stakeholders that was involved in the process. And we made sure that this process was transparent and collaborative throughout. And like, one of the things that we did that was very important was, since our first draft of the policies that was sent out to all of our stakeholders and participants in the policy workshops since June, it has been the same shared Google Doc link where everyone, anyone can make comments and provide feedback. And we have had this continuous feedback loop throughout for all of our stakeholders who were involved in the policy creation. That was important to us, that everybody was at the table. All of the voices were heard. And, you know, I really want to thank and mention again, since Chair Tong has mentioned it as well, but it is not to be taken lightly, to acknowledge the San Francisco Political Women's Committee. They have been carrying the burden of these sexual assault cases that have been prevalent for years. They brought it forth to the Democratic Party years ago. They were heard, and then they were ignored. And I want to thank them because this is not easy work for their advocacy and their consistent advocacy and support of survivors. These are very difficult topics, and, and they've been able to be extremely just, just extremely professional and diplomatic throughout. And, and we couldn't have done this without their advocacy. I also want to thank everyone who's here, everyone who has participated in our policy workshops, who have given us feedback in other routes, whether in our policy workshops or not, and anyone who's just been engaged in this process. Your engagement alone serves to be part of the solution. And I'm very proud of the policies that we've put together. I think that the policies are as good as they can be. They've never been done before. We've had nothing to carbon copy. And I understand that it's, you know, I didn't think of it as ambitious until actually ombuds, ombudsman John Transvenian mentioned it in public comment. Yeah, it's kind of ambitious, but you know what? We're going to do it because it needs to be done. These policies are, are so late in coming. We are far behind in other industries, in the private sector and otherwise. It's, it's kind of blows my mind that we have not been able to have any form of accountability around sexual assault and harassment, especially in an environment where abuse is ripe, just based on the nature of the political spaces that we work in. And I think, I'm sure there's more that I'm missing. But I'd like to just move forward with any questions and answers from anybody else here today. Thank you.
So at this point, I think we will ask for, as, as Chair Ho mentioned, any questions and debate regarding the policy. I know that each of the members has been contacted by a member of the special committee. And so hopefully, your, your questions have been answered. And if not, let's, let's have a discussion. And let's see, Member Coles, Director Coles.
Yeah. Hi, good evening. First, I want to thank the committee for the work that you have done bringing this forward. I am very excited about this. As an employee of Kaiser Permanente, I have been doing annual sexual harassment training for many, many years. And I think routine training is necessary to bring about a culture of awareness. So I'm really excited about this code of conduct. I also appreciate all the people that called in for public comments. And one of the things that I heard from those comments is a desire to make sure that the training is effective and yet not onerous to these clubs. As a board member of a Democratic Club, for a number of years now, I do know that, you know, these clubs take a lot of work to run. So my question, I think to you, Lily, or Member Ho, is about the financial resources that are going to be required, both on the part of the DCCC and on the clubs. Maybe with specific respect to the training and, in the case of an incident, the cost of an investigation.
Thank you, Member Coles. A very important question. I'm going to let Member Chandler answer this.
Yeah, it's a, excuse me, it's a great question. And so currently, the process we're using is we are going to be utilizing a training that is free made by the California Department of Civil Rights. It's 100% free, accessible to everyone, anytime. And when you have completed this training, it will provide a timestamped and named certificate for the participant, which can then be sent to the Executive Director to show compliance. So we made it, this is one hour training, very straightforward and very accessible. I will say, the end goal, at some point, hopefully within the next year, is using the relationships and the conversations started with stakeholders, is to actually create our own training, because there are really no sexual harassment and assault training specifically for the political sphere like we are intending. So the training that we're going to have, admittedly, is, doesn't fully address political volunteer power dynamics that we are engaging in right now. But we wanted to not make the perfect the enemy of the good and wanted to move forward. So we're going to be using this Department of Civil Rights training in the meantime, while we work with stakeholders to hopefully create, we created a first in the nation, first of its kind process here. We want the next step to be obviously full implementation, but also a first in the nation, first of its kind political training that we hope will be used here in San Francisco and can also be a gift to the political community across the country for those who hope to replicate what we did here in the Democratic Party of San Francisco. As it relates to the cost to the party, we have been incredibly fortunate to have some pro bono legal services. Huge gratitude to Gibson Dunn, who helped also proofread our, our policies and procedures to make sure that we were fully in legal compliance across the board. They've also offered pro bono services for investigations, which covers one part of it. For things like the ombuds person, we are going to be putting out a broad reach to see who we can get to apply to this, whether or not there are folks who will be willing to do it pro bono or not. Those are conversations that will need to be had with Chair Tong, who I know has shown a willingness to find a way to get designated resources that won't impact, that will be designated solely for this and won't impact our operations and political work that's necessary to the party. Same thing for, we've done some outreach in the restorative space. And there are significant costs involved there. And so we are also going to be putting out, you know, RFPs and requests to see if there are folks in the mediation space with a specialization in restorative practices who can help as this comes up. So it's the, the overall cost to the party is going to be an ongoing conversation. I do believe there is the, the willingness there to make sure we have a dedicated funding stream to make sure that we're able to continually operationalize these policies and procedures.
Great. Thank you.
Vice Chair Barnes, it looks like you have a question.
Yes, hi. So as part of the special, special committee working on this, I know that we were constantly iterating and improving our process. But I am wondering how we plan as a committee and/or as a group to address some of the outstanding questions that were raised by club leaders during public comment, starting, I think, from the beginning to the end of that hour. Are we envisioning, and we can talk about it offline, but just generally speaking, just to reassure people and stakeholders, are we thinking that we'll have some of these questions answered in an FAQ, in an explainer? Or will it just naturally be like when we send our additional communications out, whether it's from about rechartering or about sort of the, you know, just the, I guess, the code of conduct in its final beautiful form over email, that it will be sort of satisfied? That, that's my question.
Thank you, Member Barnes. So as you know, we have an extremely thorough process around implementation. And thank you for raising this so that, you know, everyone else is here in the audience as well is aware. You know, we plan for, we are committed to ensuring that the implementation of the policies is steady, informative, clear, and done with the utmost integrity. We always understood that, you know, in order, like actually one of our commenters said, the execution of the policies and the way we execute it is going to be just as important as the written, written policies themselves. Otherwise, it's just a bunch of words on a piece of paper. We need to ensure that the clubs are fully prepared and equipped with all the information necessary, that they know exactly what their rules and responsibilities are. And also, we need to ensure that the complainants and respondents are fully aware of what is happening when, when they are engaged in this process. So we have a long list of, of explainers, from video explainers to FAQs and, and even more. And a lot of our stakeholders are part of this process as well. So more to come on that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Calamucci.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, thank you to, to Member Ho and members of the committee who really support this work. And, you know, to the folks who participate in this process, I think it's amazing. I think it's surprising, but not surprising that we are leading on this. But, you know, knowing that these conversations continue to happen in workplaces, in unions, and in political spaces. And I think it's fantastic that we're leading. I have a question about accountability. A little bit picking up from Vice Chair Barnes' question. In particular, you know, I want to lift up, there was some public comment that expressed skepticism on the committee's ability to really stand behind what it's putting down on words. And so my question is, is there a plan for, say, a report back? Kind of, you know, summary on the work that's happened maybe in like a year or so? Or are there other sort of specific accountability steps that we will be reporting out publicly and working to hold all ourselves accountable to these policies?
Thank you, Vice Chair Calamucci. Yeah, absolutely. We, you know, from the, as we were coming to a close and the end of our policies, we acknowledged that the policies are as good as they can get. And we are committed to identifying improvements as needed. And, you know, we, again, there's nothing like it that we can really point to. In fact, our policies have already incorporated edits and improvements to things that we have learned from KDEM's and their policies and how they've done it. So I have all intentions of ensuring that a year from now, we circle back. We don't have anything scheduled yet. But we do intend on circling back to see if there was anything that we can improve on. And as to accountability, like really, the way that our policies are crafted, there are just huge guardrails between the DCCC and, and the parties involved once an incident begins. So the ombuds person, the investigators, and the judicial council, we have no communication with them. So again, the, the impetus is on us to ensure that the implementation is done with correctly, with full information and full integrity. Because really, once, once a process starts, we can't, we can't really help that. There is no communication. So we need to be sure that everyone is set up for success.
Chair Ho, could I add to that?
Yes, please.
Yeah. And also, in the processes itself, once an investigation or process has started, we specifically put in benchmarks for the ombuds person to report to the DCCC. It's all anonymized up until there is a decision made. So we won't be saying like, oh, this is person, this is Trevor and Adrian, and then they're working through their process. It'll be an anonymized report about the number of cases that are before, that are being investigated. And then we will also get a report on what the results of all those are from the ombuds person. And this is all, we also put in these accountability safeguards as it relates to if someone chooses to go through a collab process versus the DCCC process. It says in the policies and procedures that the, the club, once they've started a process, needs to inform the ombuds person and has to give an update to make sure that every few months about the status of that process, whether there was an investigation or whatnot. And so we put accountability checks both on ourselves and on the clubs that this ombuds person will be independent of us in also providing those results. And so, but the one thing we all knew going into this is that we, what we came with a final product at the end was never going to be the finished product and that we had to continue to iterate. And so that's something that we're all committed to. But those guardrails that Chair Ho was talking about were also purposely built in to make sure that we had accountability within the process at all levels.
Okay, Member Mahmood.
Thanks, Chair Tong. I just wanted to kind of cede my time to read, before we end up voting in a little bit on this item, to read a letter that was submitted by a survivor, and her name is Zara Haji. Her testimony when she came forward about a case that happened in San Francisco, I think arguably in part was the impetus for this committee. So she has, she provided a letter to me that I said that would share on her behalf and read today. So I'll read the letter now. Starts with, "Dear members of the San Francisco Democratic County Central Committee, as you prepare to vote on the SFDCCC's first ever policy addressing sexual violence and harassment, I want to express my support for this critical step forward and share my perspective as a survivor. Coming forward with my story of assault was one of the most challenging experiences of my life. Speaking to the press felt like the only avenue to ensure accountability. The lack of safe and accessible reporting options made the process of seeking justice even more isolating and painful. Too often, the only options available to survivors are public exposure or silence. Policies like the one you are considering today are critical in giving survivors more agency in how and when we share our stories and seek support. I deeply appreciate SFWPC and the DCCC members who took my feedback seriously and worked to incorporate language that gives survivors options and agency throughout the reporting and investigation process. These changes reflect a commitment to building an environment where survivors can come forward without fear of retaliation or losing control of their narrative. During this process, I have also heard conversations about false reporting. The reality is that upwards of 60% of incidents of sexual assault go unreported, a number even higher for women of color and queer people. For many of us, harassment is not an isolated event, but a part of daily life, at home, at work, or even while walking into the grocery store. These statistics highlight a system that too often fails to support survivors, leaving us without safe spaces to seek help. While this policy represents a meaningful step forward, it is only one part of the broader cultural and systemic changes that are still desperately needed. I hope to see this process implemented in a way that truly serves survivors and moves us towards a future where others don't have to endure what I went through." and moves us towards a future where others don't have to endure what I went through. I look forward to continuing to collaborate with you on efforts like these, ensuring that survivors lead the way in building systems of accountability and care. Thank you for your work on this important issue, and I urge you to support this critical step towards creating safer spaces for all of us. Sincerely, Zara Haji." It's the end of the letter, and she expressed her support for the work here. And I wanted to share this letter on her behalf because she could not attend public comment during our meeting to share her voice at this final step.
Thank you, Member Mahmoud. You know, I, I hope I said this earlier, but I may not have elaborated enough. But I wanted to emphasize to all of our, you know, and acknowledge all of our participants who either gave public comment at our May 2 meeting, either in public comment or behind closed sessions, and also in our anonymous reporting forms. And in all of our policy workshops, a lot of members who were there representing clubs or stakeholders or others, they also identified as survivors. This is an extremely emotional and difficult topic to discuss and share. And I want to acknowledge how brave and courageous everyone was to, to bring their full professional selves into these conversations and in order for us to create productive policies and see that these policies come to fruition. So I want to thank all the survivors who are present and they're in spirit with us.
Thank you, Chair Ho. Are there any more comments or discussion regarding the policy? Seeing none, are we?
Thank, thank you. I just also just want to express thanks to the special committee for all of the work on this and bringing forward such a thorough, robust policy. I think that it is more than time for the party to, to take action on this. I do think, I really appreciate all of the various stakeholders, community members, survivors, members of this body, our democratic club members who are involved. I think it's a testament to a, a lot of collaboration and communication and listening that went into this. I think there were many concerns that I had heard from the community when this process began, just around how it could be politicized, how both folks could feel isolated from the process. And I do know that folks, some folks did not feel comfortable participating in, in the process. But I appreciate those that, that came forward, that were involved and, and have contributed to this, to, to what we're voting on tonight. I had a just, I, I think, I'm glad the questions were, were raised around implementation. I think there, there is a lot here that the party is taking on and a lot of responsibility, I think, for successful implementation. And I think it is, it is incumbent on, I think, the leadership of, of the DCCC to, to be focused on this implementation. It sounds like the special committee is going to continue its work, I'm assuming, from here to, to ensure that. I do think the clubs are going to need a lot of support in terms of, of, of making this a reality and understanding the rules and understanding their reporting, you know, the obligations that come with it. And I know it was raised around tying this to the, the rechartering process. I, I do think, you know, that is a question. I, I know that there's, the ideal is for clubs to have, have these, the, the, the new code of conduct adopted in their, their, their bylaws. And I think that's an important step, but also want to make sure that once they do do that, they are able to then also implement successfully and have support from the party. So, you know, I think that some of that was addressed, but I'm curious to know more about kind of the training and kind of the hands-on support and communication that's really going to, to be provided to our clubs in the coming months. A lot of clubs are also still trying to get their handle just on the rechartering process, which I know we're coming to next on the agenda, but just making sure they have the support. I also, you know, had some questions about the role of the ombudsman, the, the investigator, and the judicial commit, committee or commission. And I, my, it's helpful to hear tonight, just understanding that that's a very, very independent actors that are separate from this body. But I did have a question about just how we ensure neutrality as well in the appointment of the ombudsman and how that process will occur. And my understanding is that, I think, if there's maybe a special subcommittee or that is, that would make a recommendation to the chair, and then the chair would potentially appoint. And I am curious, you know, just the thoughts around, you know, what, how we can ensure neutrality in the appointment of that individual and recognizing, you know, is there a role for this body to reach a consensus as, as the diversity of this body? And, and understanding that the, ensuring that everyone on this body as representatives of the party, you know, have kind of, as, as they come to, to a consensus here, I think is important potentially, and it as a demonstration of, you know, consensus around a neutral party to really, to, to take that role on, because I think it's a very important one. And I think that the state party model and John Trusvinian's work has been very important and is a great model that I know we're, we're following. So I'm just curious to, to just hear a little bit more about the thinking on that appointment process. And, and I, I think I read that the ombudsman also would, is kind of serving at the discretion of the chair. So I'm just curious how that relationship will work once someone's identified and how soon we expect to also to, to have someone onboard. It's just to, to then, once the clubs are taking action on this and they're, and they're rechartering, that we're also set up to be able to, on, on the party's end, to have the ombudsman in place and the entire process workable for everybody.
Thank you, Member Galata. I'll speak to the implementation. Many of our clubs and stakeholders are part of our implementation process. And we made sure of that because, you know, it, it is important to hear from a variety of different clubs of all sizes and experience levels to see, to truly understand what their needs are and what their questions are. And Member Galata, I welcome you to join us, really. You know, we can, we can use all the, all the help we can get and to make sure that we've got a robust and thorough and different avenues of, of explainers as well as to ensure that all the clubs are, are fully prepared as soon as these policies commence for them. And then I'm going to actually turn over to Chair Tong regarding the, the selection process of the ombuds person and judicial council. I'm sure you've read the policies already, that there will be, it will be selected by committee and, and approved by Chair Tong.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I did see what the, the special committee had designed in terms of trying to keep the ombuds person a neutral person and the qualifications set forth by the code of conduct. I understand your concern, Member Galata, about ensuring that the ombuds person is somebody who is neutral in nature. I think the committee advances forward a person for the chair to then appoint or reject. And I, I do think that opening up this process of selecting this neutral person to the political body kind of flies in the face of it being a, trying to avoid the political process, if you will. You know, at, in some regards, you can't avoid a discretionary, you can't avoid a discretionary decision. And ultimately, you know, person will be accountable to me or whoever the chair is in iterations of this body to come. And so I, I think that the, the code of conduct takes a very measured approach as to how, how we will select the people who will ultimately either say, you know, this should advance to an investigation or know that the complaint has not met the very basic elements of a violation of our code of conduct. And so to that, to that end, I think that, you know, the, the code of conduct strikes, strikes a balance there. Member Wen.
Uh, hold on. Just a friendly reminder, unless you're called on, please keep your computer muted. Go ahead, Member Wen.
Thanks, Executive Director Svandari, and thank you, Chair Tong. I just wanted to thank everybody who's been working so hard on this, and especially Lily Ho and Chair Ho, because it's, it's, it's fairly monumental about like what's happened as far as the speed at which this has happened in policy creation. So I really want to applaud my fellow members of the special committee who work so hard, especially and also the community members of the task force. I just want to kind of echo the, the concern that is kind of raised around the idea of like the, because the ombuds person is having, being delegated so much power and so much authority and so much independence. And so I'm curious, like, you know, is, when, when, you know, the, this committee who selects the, who, question, who, who's on the committee that selects the, or who receives, is it an application process? Is it a thing? Maybe these are just implementation details, but I'm curious around like who, who is in that committee that is formed to select the ombudsman? And then the other question that I have is, is there kind of like, what recourse is there? I guess if, one, you know, like if there's, you know, again, they're independent. There's just a different allegations happen, reporting happens, decision is made. And there is an appeal process, but you know, we didn't talk too much about that in this call. But, you know, is, is that happening again? And is there a different kind of thing that happens as far as the ombuds person is concerned? As far as like, would there be a removal of an ombuds person? Because they weren't, you know, serving in their, their capacity as we thought they would be? Just open questions and thank, thanks for.
Well, I mean, I think that's why it's important that the, the chair retain the discretion to remove the ombuds person and then seek a new, new nominee from the committee. Because you can't just, if a person's not doing what they're supposed to be doing, then you have to have some authority to remove them. You know, I, I, I do think that the, the, the code of conduct talks about, you know, making sure that people are acting in good faith. And certainly, if you, if any member of this body believes that, you know, people are not acting in good faith or that the ombuds person is not neutral and can, can cite to why, either say like, you know, the, the ombuds person did not disclose a relationship or a relationship to a person that's involved or, or has some kind of other connection to a member of this committee, then I, I would certainly consider that in, in the determination of whether or not this ombuds person, person should be appointed or not. I do think that it's important to make sure that this body is aware of who that person is and who the appointment is as well. Chair Ho, do you have any further comment?
Yeah, I mean, I think there is a narrative that like this ombuds person has a whole lot of power. And, you know, I'm going to a little bit disagree on that. The ombuds person's role is to determine whether a violation was made or not in order to move it forward to the investigation. Aside from that, they're not making any critical decisions. And the, whether there was a violation made or not, like, that's pretty clear cut in our, in our code of conduct. The other thing the ombuds person does is they retain information and they share it with a pseudonymized so that we have some, we have a reporting system. So, and then in terms of like what you would determine as a lot of power, I mean, that's why we have three different, you know, three different segments of individuals as part of the process. You've got the ombuds person, the investigators, and the judicial council. And the judicial council is set up specifically so that it can be created to ensure that the individuals involved are not, do not have any personal or professional conflicts or relations to the individuals involved in the incident. So I think we've done the best we can to create neutrality, ensure neutrality, ensure that there's a balance. And again, like, it is the ensuring that we execute our policies with integrity. Otherwise, it's just a bunch of words on paper. And I have full intentions of, of ensuring that this is done well and executed well. I believe Chair Tong has the same intentions as well. And I believe that all of us who worked so hard on these policies, all of our stakeholders, all of the survivors and future survivors and all of the clubs. I mean, really, everyone wants this to be good and functional. And so we're all here to hold accountability to each other to ensure that this is done well.
Well, yeah, I wanted to quickly clarify, the ombuds person doesn't decide whether the violation occurred or not. They, it's even lesser than that. They determine whether the, based on the description of the report, whether it potentially violates.
Thank you.
Conduct. I think it's important to distinguish because I think to the, to the whole point of this discussion, they're just trying to match does, does what's, does info document one kind of conflict with info document two? That's the whole purpose of the investigator. They determine, they gather the facts. And then that's also then the purpose of the adjudication body. The adjudication body is the final entity that actually determines whether a violation goes forth or actually violated or code of conduct or not. So I think for those separate, those reasons, each of those three segments that Lily outlined, that's all the, the processes and qualities of control to ensure that it's no one person, it's a whole steps of, of processes. And an ombuds person in that, and in that context, that entire process doesn't have, I think, the, maybe, I think, might be misconception about the authority of the ombudsman person here. But I think that's, it's important to qualify.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for those clarifying comments. And just one more question around the pseudonym, the basically the anonymization of the complaint. I know Lily, Member Ho, you, you mentioned that privacy and confidentiality is like probably, is the number one issue and most concerned. I'm curious, like, what kind of pseudonymizing is, can be happening? It's like, what is the format of a report, the data that would be available to DCCC at all, if anything? Would, would it be something like there's a, a recognition of a violation or potential violation? Is it qualitative? Like, this is the type of thing that's complained and reported? You know, is it just numbers? I guess there's a little bit vagueness around that question.
Sure. I think it's important to actually circle back to even why we are doing these reports. One, we wanted to be able to have a process where both the DCCC is not involved, but also we wanted a way to under, understand if there was, for example, a predator who is going from club to club. So in an imaginary scenario, we've got four clubs, separate clubs having four separate incidents that go to the ombuds person. The ombuds person identifies, whoa, this is the same respondent in four different incidents. Is this a problem? So that type of data is important for us to track so that we can circle back and deal with the issue and, 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 and deal with it at the root of the issue. And then there's other reasons. And, and I, of course, we, we really don't know until this really pans out. But let's say, I mean, and this is more statistically true when we've got larger data sets across the nation, for example, like we kind of have standard statistics around like what abuse looks like around certain, you know, certain demographics and, and whatnot. And so we understand that it's kind of equal, for example, throughout, regardless of the demographic. But maybe something is just not reported. Or for the more vulnerable communities, it's because they're already involved with social services and therefore they're identified sooner, for example. But I don't want to get into that. But it is really like, we want to understand if there is an issue in a particular club or maybe the other clubs aren't reporting. The city is so, the, you know, our numbers are probably too small to be able to dissect all of that. But that is actually the purpose of the ombuds person having some sort of oversight, but the DCCC not having any details to the information.
I'd add, I think, and this goes back to how do we have a survivor-centered process? That's both ensuring confidentiality but also transparency. And so I think having a standardized data, basically the type of data would be on a regular cadence, we get a report on how many reports has the ombuds person received? And then also disclosing out to the DCCC, those reports, what stage of the pipeline are they on? Are they now progressed to investigator stage? Are they at the adjudication phase? And I think that's important because as we've heard in a lot of survivor testimony that informed this process, a lot of survivors feel that they report something and nothing happens. Or they report something and it goes into a black box. And so I think that's. And so I think that's why we developed the, the framework about having, uh, reporting out of metrics so that people can follow along, uh, based on, uh, their reports. They won't know that's their report that it could obviously communicate direct with the Ombuds person, but at least as a DCCC, we will have context on what is the stage progressing at and that we are actually holding ourselves accountable to the survivors who are reporting. Um, and another component as well is like, we have this process where we've allowed democratic clubs to run their own process as well. And so part of this, this framework that we've developed in the code of conduct says that if a democratic club is running their own process, they have to also provide regular reports back to the Ombuds person on that process. That's our way of then holding the clubs accountable if they get a report. And so I think that's why this anonymized data is important. It's basically just metrics. How many reports and in what stage of the pipeline? So we can hold ourselves accountable, hold the clubs accountable and provide transparency to survivors that, um, want to know that there's progress happening.
Thank you, member Mahmoud. Is there any further discussion on, uh, the proposed code of conduct? And what I will also say is that this is, um, something that I think we should treat as a living document. Um, where, you know, it's not, I don't think anyone on the special committee, although they have put a substantial amount of time and thoughtfulness into this, into this document. I don't think that anyone believes that it can't be improved in some way, shape or form as we, as we attempt to implement it. So, um, I would like the members to keep that in mind as we move forward. And, um, certainly as we begin implementation of this code of conduct, if we're to ratify it. Member Avalos.
Thank you. Um, I'm, um, I've been in politics a long time and I actually just before anyone second guesses what I'm gonna say next. It's like, I really appreciate that we have something before us today to, to, to adopt and approve. And I have been in politics a very long time. And the issues of sexual harassment, sexual assault ha- have been constant. And I've also, you know, at times trying to take it into my own leadership to try and sort through things and never felt I did well with it and, um, never felt there was proper guardrails. And it's really hard because everything is so politicized in so many ways. Um, the experience of survivors, um, and, and the protection of perpetrators. Uh, and it's really, really hard to decipher what's true and what's not. Creating a process that enables people to come forward, that has some level of objectivity, that's evidence-based, that, uh, you know, that is a structure within the party where politics plays out, I, I think is really, really great and essential to do. And it can make a huge difference in improving, um, how we interact with each other, uh, politically. Um, it could probably save people's careers, um, and, and actually change behavior. So I, I just want to say, uh, appreciate the work that's been done with this. Um, I think this has been one, you know, the issue of, uh, of how we manage, like, these issues of sexual harassment and sexual assault in politics has been agonizing. And I think we're creating, you know, the ability to, to make, you know, some reasonable way to interact with one another and good guardrails that have not been in existence before. So I just want to say thank you for that. I don't think it's a perfect document and I, no one's claiming that. And I do think that we should not set things in stone, but be, uh, have a process or review how successful this has been from, you know, time to time. I think I saw that it's looking a year ahead. I, I, I'm not sure if, if, if that's gonna be sufficient, whether we might be able to look at how it's working if, if we need to within six months. But I'm open to, you know, hearing that, um, if, if there's a way that, you know, incidents that happen that pile up or something that requires some earlier review, that might be important. But not having something set in stone, I think is really important. I just want to thank folks for working on this. And, uh, I really hope that, uh, we can see some real change in, um, how we can, you know, uh, lessen the tension that we often have in trying to, um, sort through these really complicated issues. Um, and, and really, you know, see people for who they are and what they're experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you, member Avalos. Uh, any other comments or discussion? Member Chandler?
Yeah, feeling like we might be at the end of this. I won't make any assumptions, but, um, I, one, first, uh, wanted to reiterate, uh, Chair Ho's um, compliments of, of you Chair Tang. This would not have been happening without the leadership of Chair Tang and the decisiveness. Um, and so thank you for that. It, it, we cannot, I don't think we can underestimate the importance of this. And also the, the incredible extraordinary nature of how quickly this came about. Uh, we were all elected in March, quickly thrown into an election cycle, uh, an endorsement cycle. One of the busiest times for this committee, for everyone on here, because obviously we're all involved in politics. Then all of us involved in various campaigns of, um, various, uh, things. And we still got this done. That is incredible and it is a testament to Chair Ho. We, we all got distracted on a lot of different things, a lot of stuff going on. Chair Ho had many, many things, um, in her life, pulling her in many different directions. But she was steadfast in the leadership of this committee. And we would not be here today if it wasn't for her, uh, incredible leadership, um, and coalition building and listening, um, and delegation. And, um, it, it just extraordinary leadership. And so, uh, I don't think we, we can, we cannot, um, overstate how important this is. The fact that we are setting a national example, uh, through this work. But none of that national example would have happened without the leadership of Chair Ho, um, navigating this ship, uh, in the most incredible possible way. And so I just, I feel incredibly proud to have been a part of this and continuing to be a part of this. But I feel even prouder to have, uh, worked, uh, with Chair Ho on this. Cause she just, you know, was an exemplary model of what leadership in politics is, is and should be. So I just want to say thank you to Chair Ho for, for getting us to this point.
Thank you. Thank you, member Chandler. Um, any other comments? Uh, does anyone want to make a motion? To adopt, motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Uh, thank you, member Mahmoud, a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Chair Hare. And, um, members, should we, should we do this, uh, by acclamation? Is there anyone who would like to have a roll call vote?
Uh, Chair Ho, I think this is important enough to have a roll call. Or I mean Chair Tang, sorry. Uh, I've too many chairs. Um, no, I think, I think this is, I think this is of significance that a, a roll call would be important.
Thank you, member Chandler. Uh, Director Chen, please call the roll.
And as he's preparing that, just a reminder that, um, a couple of members have since dialed in. So, uh, Mike, you might need to double check your roster one more time. If you're myself, there's twenty seven people dialed in.
Okay, so I think I have everybody, but if, if I do not call you, I will, I will ask and hopefully I have everybody. See, calling the role on the motion to approve the code of conduct in item four of the agenda. Make sure I say the, the full thing. Code of Conduct and Policies for Sexual Assault and Harassment for the San Francisco Democratic Party, uh, motion to adopt, uh, uh, moved by Mahmoud, seconded by Hare, uh, calling the role, uh, Akbar.
Aye.
Akbar, aye. Alyoto Pier.
Aye.
Aye, Avalos.
Aye.
Avalos, aye. Barnes.
Aye, enthusiastic, aye.
Aye, Kalamucci.
Aye.
Aye, Chan.
Aye.
Aye, Chandler.
Aye.
Aye, Chan, myself, votes, aye. Holes.
Aye.
Aye, Dorsey.
Oh, aye.
Yes, uh, proxy by number Ho is voted, voted aye. Uh, Galata.
Aye.
Aye, Gupta.
Aye.
Aye, Hare.
Aye.
Aye, Ho.
Aye.
Aye, Kim.
Aye.
Aye, Li.
Aye.
Proxy by number Kalamucci, uh, Mahmoud.
Aye.
Aye, Mar.
Aye.
Mar, aye, Win.
Aye.
Win, aye, Philhauer.
Aye.
Philhauer, aye, Sanjirardi.
Aye.
Aye, for two is absent, uh, Chair Tang.
Aye.
Aye, uh, Ex officios, uh, Pelosi is absent. Right, uh, Mullen is also absent. Kundalakis.
Aye.
Aye, Ma.
Aye.
Aye, Cohen.
Aye.
Aye, Weiner.
Aye.
Aye, Haney. Aye, Stephanie.
Aye.
Stephanie, aye, uh, have all those who wish to vote, voted? Okay, uh, see, there are twenty eight members present and voting and all twenty eight have voted aye. Uh, Chair Tang, this, uh, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for the work of the special committee. Thank you Chair Ho for your leadership. Um, and I am happy that we have adopted this. Um, moving on to item number five, extending a rechartering deadline for charter democratic clubs. This discussion will be led by Vice Chair Hare. Um, and as asked during the public comment, questions of rechartering, um, can be directed to Vice Chair Hare. Um, although, um, they can also be directed to myself or Executive Director Svan Dari. Um, but lead us through the rechartering process and what we need to do here, Vice Chair Hare.
Yes, um, good evening, members. Uh, the current rechartering deadline is January twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, which would require the central committee to administer the application, uh, review said applications and then vote on rechartering by said date, um, with no, um, pauses, tablings or hiccups. In order to allow our Democrats to the appropriate time to submit their application thoroughly, uh, including the preparation to adopt the sexual assault code that we have just passed, as well as to allow everyone the requisite time to spend time with their families over the holidays, which I know we've all been lacking over the campaign season. I am today proposing that we extend the current deadline to March first, twenty twenty five.
From when to when? Sorry, question?
From January twenty fourth to March first.
Okay, thanks.
Someone would like to make a motion?
Wait, but doesn't it have to be? Shouldn't it be like our, our next meeting?
So, uh, well.
Oh, because we need it for the next meeting. I see.
Yeah, I want to allow room for questions and discussion about any rechartering applications should the, should arise. Uh, member Sanjirardi?
Uh, regarding the policies that we just passed, what is the impact there? Are they gonna be rechartered retroactively once in March and then rechartered again for the new rechartering? Like, because they have to adopt these new policies again in May?
So the rechartering application that member Wen and I have been working on, um, and which will become available very imminently, has a checkbox that says, do you commit to adopting the, uh, code of conduct into your bylaws by May twenty twenty five? So it's a, it's a future commitment that were a club not to comply by that date, they would be, um, you know, subject to scrutiny from the clubs and chartering committee. Any further questions?
Let me move this to a vote.
I move, I move.
Thank you, member Wen. Um, seconded by anyone?
Second.
Seconded by member Sanjirardi. All, uh, can we take this by acclamation or without objection? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, uh, this motion passes. Rechartering has, uh, the deadline has been extended to recharter until, uh, May?
March.
March, sorry, March first, March first, thank you.
You didn't know what we're voting for.
Thank you. Okay, um. So, um, we are up to item number six, which is adjournment. Um, are there any, um, in memorand, in memoriam, um, that, or any, any celebrations that anyone would like to adjourn in? Um, member Wen.
Yes, um, thanks Chair Tang. I just would like to adjourn in, um, memoriam of all the trans folks who have passed away because they can get access to healthcare. And we just saw at the Supreme Court that they are, their trans rights are for discussion. Um, I am very proud that the Democratic Party is standing in full, um, hopefully as fully behind, uh, trans individuals. But there are a lot of people have died and, um, and so I would like, uh, to adjourn in that memory. Thank you.
Thank you, member Wen. Uh, member Mahmoud.
I'd like to also adjourn in memoriam of Reverend Arnold Townsend. Um, he passed away, uh, a couple of weeks, um, before election day. I know he's touched many people in the Fillmore Western Edition, uh, as well as members of this body who had served with him in different capacities over the years. Um, uh, I know personally when I was, uh, door knocking throughout District Five, um, so many people knew his name. And when he passed, it was almost like dominoes where in real time you could see the community being affected. And, um, he had such a huge impact on so many people, uh, in the district and the city. And I wanted to put his name forward for recognition as we close out the year as well.
Thank you. Um, member Chandler.
Yeah, I'd also like to adjourn in the memory of Dennis Kelly, um, longtime labor leader who passed recently. Um, and all of his contributions to educators, uh, in labor in San Francisco.
Thank you, member Chandler. Um, and with, um, member Ho's permission, uh, I would also ask that we adjourn in memory of her mother, who passed very recently. Um, member Ho, um, was sharing the special committee's work and pulling everything together at the same time while caring for her ailing mother, uh, who, who passed, uh, surrounded by friends and family. And, um, so I know that, um, from my own experience that the passing of a mother is probably one of the most difficult things that you can experience in your lifetime. So, um, I want to recognize, um, member Ho's mother at this time. Thank you, members. We are adjourned.